He sold all the properties.
All right, it is six o'clock and so we will begin our pre-meeting. Roll call please.
Mayor He, President, Mr. House.
President.
Mr. Roberts.
Present.
Mr. Miller.
Present.
Mr. Strayer.
Present.
Mr. Castleberry.
Present.
Mr. Gou.
Present.
All commission members present.
Yeah.
All right, I will turn it over to our city administrator Greg Elliott.
Thank you, Mayor. First item for tonight is an opportunity to go in your eyes, you a bit more with our Parks and Recreation Master Plan, which is on the agenda for adoption tonight. Reminder, we have the deadline of February 1st for filing that with the DNR. We've been through the entire public engagement process, had our public hearing, done our audits, we think it's in good shape, but because we didn't ever really have a chance to discuss it with the commission, wanted to give our Parks and Rec Director Jeremiah Davies a chance to go over some of the highlights with you and answer any questions that you might have about it before you're asked to take action on it tonight. So Jeremiah is supposed to zoom tonight. If you can hear us Jeremiah, I'll turn it over to you and maybe you can give us just some of the high points of the plan, what it contains, what we've publicly had to say during our engagement process, what our projects are.
All right, good evening, everybody, thank you so much, this opportunity. Really kind of introducing what this parks plan is, really the very framework of it is designed for us to submit this to the Michigan DNR. And what this really allows us to do is to begin to apply for grants and different forms of funding to support our Parks and Rec Department and then the things that we're doing here. One of the things I've discussed with a variety of people, the title somewhat could be a little misleading, really what this is, is a checklist to kind of show a framework that we have policies and procedures in place that supports a number of different areas that the DNR wants us to look at, you know, our parklands, our open park spaces, safety, also additional long-term planning, they want to see that we have a plan in place and that we're just not randomly applying for grants and different things like that without a plan in place. So really, you know, this is roughly, it'll be sixty-seven pages, this really kind of gives a framework of our existing park system, provides an inventory of everything that's essentially there. It also highlights, you know, some of the accomplishments that our previous Parks Department and folks that have been in charge have accomplished over the last ten years, capital improvements and things of that nature. So really what this is, again, it's just really to provide the DNR with some information on our local area. It's showing what we have in regards to, again, our parks, our recreational facilities, different things like that. Again, this kind of moves us forward. It also gives us some guidelines on how we want to move forward in this new venture. It also provides, you know, myself, a checklist and it gives me measurables to go forward as we move through the next five years or so. So really, again, this is kind of an exciting opportunity, I'm in an exciting venture with this. One of the great things that came out of this was the survey from this past summer. It provided a ton of input from our city residents, also our stakeholders and other folks that use our park system. And so really what this does, and the information that was gathered was extremely insightful and this really kind of helped in the preparation of this parks plan. And really I feel confident that what's in this park plan and where we're going is very much aligned with what our city residents are excited about. So I'd like to turn it to you guys and ask, allow you to ask questions and maybe I can fill you in on a few things if you're unsure about certain things.
I think you have all had it in your packet a couple of times now. So you have a chance to look through it, I know some through it in more detail than others. But yeah, given that we don't like to act on things without a chance for pre-meeting discussion at this point, provide this opportunity to take action on it. You know, if there were anything pressing, we did leave ourselves an additional meeting before filing that.
I have some questions about the ADA compliance information. I wasn't real clear on your numbering system and how crucial is it that we get those items that you listed in the report in compliance?
So Commissioner Roberts, as I kind of looked at this and started to read up on this, as far as I understand, before I came on, this wasn't something that, there wasn't exactly kind of a journal system, but going forward and reading some of the requirements that the DNR asks for is essentially keeping a journal system, being able to identify that our current parks are ADA compliant and that's something that's in the works on my end, that going forward, looking to bring in consultants to look at our parks and give me a report and essentially, you know, let myself and our department know what is compliant and what isn't compliant. But going forward, I will keep an up-to-date journal showing what is ADA compliant, what is not, and then essentially putting a timeline for myself to ensure that these different parts and facilities are up and compliant.
So the rating system that you did, the twos, the threes, that was something you created or used from the two thousand, I think it was two thousand and ten system, is that correct?
Correct.
Yeah.
I guess I have one question and I'm pretty confident on the answer, but I would just like to hear you say it Jeremiah, is that I've read through the plan and I just want to make sure that it's not locking us into anything. I have, I knew that we had to have a plan in place and I just, this is something that just shows that we've kind of done our due diligence and moving forward, we can start to make plans on things that we would like to change. It's because I have ideas that I would like to possibly pursue in the future, especially with Heritage Park and with some of our other parks too. So this isn't locking us into anything as much as it's a guide for us.
That, Commissioner Schrader, that's absolutely right, this is very, if you will, fluid. Again, this was really the point of this and as I researched this when I came on last month and really kind of started to understand the full scope of this, this is really a checklist and essentially they want to know that, again, that we have policies, procedures in place to address like Commissioner Roberts brought up, us being compliant in a number of different facets. So really, again, they just, it's one of those things that they don't want to simply, the city of Adrian, just submitting a grant one day and say, we need a hundred thousand dollars for this, we don't really have a plan for it just yet. They want to know that we have a plan in place, that we have a framework and that we're moving towards keeping our parks safe, maintenance, all these different types of things. So again, this is fluid and this does allow things for change. This is essentially just a checklist and showing essentially due diligence on our part that we're moving forward with this.
Further on that, to Jeremiah's point, the key is, are we seeking grant funding from DNR for it? If we were doing that and there were not support for it in the plan, we wouldn't have very good chance to get that grant. It can be amended over time, from time to time, but the key is, if you have projects that you're going to seek state support for, you know, there should be some reflection of them either in terms of a policy objective or specific action items in the plan.
So to that end, so there's like eight projects at the very end, but if we get the bone pool feasibility study back and it says do X, Y, Z for whatever money, dollars, because that's not on these projects, we could, but it's in the report, we could still ask for it?
Yeah, if there's support for it in the goals and objectives of the plan, then that would still be something. And also the plan? Not, thank you Jeremiah, appreciate it.
Thank you.
Next, we have the presentation of a concept of a gateway arch for Adrian College and their representatives are here to explain this to you. Expect this is going to be an action item on your next agenda. It was reviewed by the Planning Commission already. We've kind of held them up in terms of taking action on it, working out concepts for a maintenance agreement. The city attorney has, they had proposed something, so the attorney has redrafted that in the form of a license agreement, which they just got just before the meeting tonight. So they probably haven't had a chance to review that yet, but I did want to give them the chance to explain the entire project for you again in the pre-meeting setting before you're asked to take action on it next time. To set this up, they of course constructed Adrian College Boulevard, but have subsequently dedicated that to the city as a city street. And so given that it is now a city street, their plans are to construct an archway at the entrance to their campus there on that boulevard, all within the public right-of-way and so right-of-way permit would be needed. Normally, we wouldn't bring a right-of-way permit to the city commission we've issued administratively, but given the scope of this, we felt like this should be something that the city commission takes action on. Jason and Frank, who wants to speak? Flo, as you want us to explain your project.
Well, I mean, I can speak to it, this is the last phase of the whole boulevard. Boulevard project, you know, building the road, entrance, gateway walls, and then the arch over that road, of which pictures were in your packets. So the college has signed off on, forward that project and assuming we see the movement on that, looking to complete that work in the spring. Are there questions specifically that I can answer or anything?
I think it's a nice way to finish the project off, some nice bling there.
Great. To Jason's point, it's the third phase in this project and it's the final phase at least as it relates to, there may be some landscaping issues on the college property itself to the south, but this would, this would complete that project. And I did receive the license, licensure, licensing agreement. Had a chance to look it over, I don't think, I don't see anything substantive in that. For us from moving forward, but we'll, you know, we'll take it. I think everything in there looks something in the bowl and not in the work.
One thing I think probably is getting the obvious, the work over the road will require a road closure for some period of time, probably two weeks to get the working roadway complete safely for the workers and the citizens. So as Chris talked about, their right-of-way permit, I know that requires to be consulted. Put some language in there when you actually prove it at the next meeting. I don't know those are specific dates yet, but it'll depend on weather and timing permitting.
Yeah, we don't do workflows anymore, so the commission is done administratively, right?
Yeah, normally, yes. Exceptionally rammed by the occupancy.
Thing looks nice, sign is important when you're coming into city, we just did that, you know, over the last year and then be a nice, cool structure go coming in.
It looks very nice, I just wondered, have you heard anything from neighboring houses? Any of the residents, have they? Are they concerned at all about it?
About the archways specifically?
Any of the, any of the design? With the boulevard, any of that?
So you'll have to, you know, take my word for it, but honestly, we've had nothing but really positive feedback about the roadway itself, about navigation. We've worked with one of, one of the residents who was most concerned in terms of fencing structure for the residential properties to the east of that roadway and actually replace sections for that particular resident. I think to this point, we've had really, really solid feedback about it. We have some concerns and we're going to continue to work. The only phase that could be phase four is looking to develop a culvert structure that would be an underground culvert structure going from the south side of this property to property over on Beecher Street. That could be a way to help pedestrian traffic, but we're, I mean, that is in its absolute infancy stages at this moment.
And creating a boulevard out of this road doesn't change traffic patterns with the roundabout at all?
Not at all.
I mean, looking at the picture, but I'm just, people already have problems with the roundabout. I just didn't know this way. About, if it will, will it make it easier? Maybe it'll make it easier.
Yeah, the round, I mean, obviously the roundabout's already there, so the only structure that we're talking about tonight is...
I'm so sorry.
But to that point, we've even done our own internal study. Part of the, it was the city commission who suggested the roundabout
Yeah.
to reduce traffic speed at that intersection because it used to be just a one-way bend in the road and people just go through there. So, and it has, we have information to show that it has reduced speeds at that sort of intersection.
My apologies, I don't think it's going outside.
You mentioned the fencing. Really quite classy and that's, that's touch.
We, we have this sort of...
Sure. Great book.
More on the arch. Thank you both. Come on by and we'll see you next time. So last item, we're booking right along by the way, much faster than I thought, but you know, we had, we had touched in the context of my evaluation actually on your current strategic plan, whether or not it is still current or not. It ought to be looked at. Wanted to give you an opportunity to talk about that, whether you think it should be revisited at this point or you'd like to go through the process of hiring a consultant to assist with that as you have in the past, when you have ideas about what that should be and so on and so forth. Just throw that out there for discussion.
I think I was the one that kind of brought that up in the pre-meeting about that because we were talking about measurables and all that. And so I just think with the amount of funds that we have at our disposal, I think that it's a good idea that, I mean, Commissioner Schrader and myself are the only ones that have sat through an actual strategic planning session. I think it's, I'm not a huge fan of the two-day events that I've been a part of, but I think they're a way to set priorities that we can then, with our department heads and we could pass on to Greg and give him measurables to achieve. Like we set the priorities in the vision and then he implements it. So I think with where we are financially, I think that we need to think about how we want to use some of those funds, you know, whether it be our blight remediation, whether it be new pool, whether it be whatever, but I think getting us all together and talking about it, you know, on a Friday night, a couple hours with our department heads, set priorities or something like that. I mean, time-wise, we can, you know, set some priorities for Greg and he can have something he can reference and then say, hey, you know, we tackled A, B, and C, but now we need to go get B, E, and F, you know, kind of thing. So those are my thoughts, I mean, we are in a good position. It's a good time to be a commissioner now because we do have some funds and, but setting priorities for Greg, I think he here, so not only our success, but also his.
We're talking about more of a scaled down version?
Yeah, right. Something we can give him and then, you know, we did, we used Dr. Joe Orin last time from Eastern Michigan and I'll tell you, you lose a lot of people because it was a two-day thing, we did it on Friday night, it was Saturday all day. And I get lost usually about midday on Saturday, I'm ready to leave. So something scaled down that we can all talk about and throw our cards on the table and have department head input and the administrative input and just give him a document that he can say, all right, well, let me go attack it now, so.
Do you think it's important to have someone help structure that or not important?
I think it's important to have somebody facilitate it. I mean, I mean, or, I mean, because the flow of that, I mean, I've been a part of you, you've been a part of what, two of them?
Yeah.
Just kind of, just the flow of it, there's people that can kind of get us, because you break off in groups and then we get back together and not who that individual, I don't even know if Dr. Joe Orin even does that anymore, but I don't know.
I feel like the last time, especially the last time, we... That's not sounding disrespectful, I feel like we've played a lot of games. I just would rather get down to business, let's talk it out. And I think that whoever facilitates it, I would like it to be somebody local, maybe who has a feel for the community too, so that that helps streamline.
Okay, but I think, you know, Commissioner Schrader is right, it's like, you know, it's kind of a lot of just talking about, I mean, it was, it was productive for about two or three hours. And then the rest of the time, that was on the first day, it was on the first day, so.
I really feel like with five out of the seven, not having gone through this process, that it's very important, I also do feel with the influx of money that we have received recently that we really need to be, really do, we really need a plan where we know where we can use this money and we have a plan that is set. I also do feel though, I'm always a little nervous when it comes to planning meetings because when you're, you're planning, I want to just be assured, assured that we're, there's these actionable items, that we're actually going to take action, like we're actually going to follow through. It's not just going to be a plan that goes and then sits, like I feel has happened in the past. Like I, I really, that, so I like your, like saying the scaled down version, so it seems more accessible. It seems that we can accomplish these goals, that it puts something forward that has a little, maybe a little more teeth to it, a little bit more action oriented, just because I just don't like planning meetings when we're just going to just put it off the side and say, yeah, we have a strategic plan, but we never look at it, we never do anything with it, we're not taking any action on it.
I like what you're saying, when you use the word action, so there, we come up with action items, but it can be modified easily. So, you know, a year down the road, well, we accomplished this and now we take that off there and it's easy to add something else, we don't have to do the whole song and dance again.
Well, I think what the mayor's saying, I mean, you didn't, you weren't a part of last one, but that's exactly our discussion was, we have to have things that we can achieve as a collective group and even with, along with administrative or department head. So, you know, not grabbing for pie in the sky and saying that, you know, let's, you know, remediate all the blight in the city major in, you know, in three years, that's just not, not realistic. But, you know, or let's just eliminate the pension deficit in five years, that's not realistic either. But we did put that as a priority and then we did action items when it comes to changing, you know, over defined benefit, to define contribution, putting lump sums in the pension. So I know, I know the mayor, Mayor Jacobson, he had his ambulance service was one of his priorities down there, but I think it's a good idea because again, you know, Commissioner Roberts, I'm sure she has ideas on what she wants to do. Like she has agenda items, she has prioritized and we should cast me, we all do, you know, so let's get them, let's get them out, slay them out, talk about them and then prioritize them and then just go attack it.
I think no matter what anyways, it's always good to reassess a plan, you know, and even annually, it's good to reassess a plan anyways, just to keep you aware of it, to get it back in the forefront of your mind at all times. You know, even if we weren't going to redo it all or overhaul it, I still think that even needs to be something we commit to, that we're going to keep looking at it every year to try to keep it up to date, just like Commissioner Schrader said, like maybe there's something that is not applicable anymore and we're going to switch something out or whatever it might be.
I'll have to look, pull the last one we did, I think we had five major ones, I think we did all five, I'm pretty sure we did. So we, we held ourselves accountable to that too, to make sure that, you know, that, I mean...
What's that?
Who was the minister? Yeah, yeah, so he started attacking that, you know, so.
Do you view the prior strategic plan as a starting point or do you feel like it's pretty much, water under the bridge at this point and really starting from scratch in this process?
I think, I mean, I think we can reference last, I mean, because I'll pull up, you know, my emails and see, I mean, it was years ago, we did it. So we're just going to see, but I think that, you know, with five of the seven of us, they're not going through that process and not had their input, I think it's important for them also to put on paper what they want to see the business.
I think we should just call it water under the bridge and start over.
Yeah.
Would you like me to hand out an RFP for facilitation services or...
We paid Dr. Joe Orin a lot of money and I think that that's not something I'd be interested in. I mean, it was for what we got for, in my opinion, I mean, like and correct if I'm wrong, but I'd rather see us, you know, just somebody that facilitated the room because make sure to be the flow, get in and get out.
Yeah, somebody who's going to keep us focused and on track.
Right.
I think we know what the issues are and where we want to go. So I don't, I don't think we have to spend a ton of money. That's why I said, I think to somebody who, who is local would probably be beneficial, but doesn't have to be etched in stone.
It's fine to be someone local, just make sure that they're, they're on the outside and they're being a facilitator. They're remembering that we're looking for open discussion and not a local person may very well have their own agenda too, which is a good point. Having someone come in and facilitate our discussions, organize your thoughts and organize our direction where we're going to go can happen very, very quickly.
I think he, because he taught class there at Eastern and so he would take the information he gathered from that and then we would get a report and then pretty much all labeled what our, what our priorities was. And then, so we could always reference that, so maybe, you know, so maybe that is something we need to talk, I mean, because like Doug's actually right, we have to be more organized, we have to have something, you know, because people that are local that have been around.
We're paying, we're paying for their structure, we're paying for their abilities. We don't want a business person from the community that wants to come in and do this. It's not a, that's not what it is, we're looking for someone who understands this process and bring in a structure that's going to be good for all of us.
Will those people get community input before we have a meeting? Does that come or is that, what does that look like?
I don't think so.
No.
No, and then once we've done in the past, I mean, I don't think so.
Who did it the first time we were involved?
I think it was Orin again, out of Stumble Center.
It was out of Stumble Center, yeah.
I think it was Joe Orin too, I think he did it twice, I think, yeah.
All right.
People do it, people do that kind of work, I mean, maybe it is proven for us to send something out just because I, you got me thinking like, you know, you don't want somebody from the community because you want somebody that's objective and, and just wants to gather our thoughts and keep us going.
Don't get me wrong, we have some really great, great people that could really help us in this whole process from the community, but I think we really need someone as the tool belt that's, that's needed for this kind of work, this kind of discussion, an organizational skill, or the training, or the experience. I mean, I can't put a value sometimes on it, the market is wide open, there are very good people out there that do not cost a lot of money. Cost does not reflect their skills. Sometimes.
Joe's, Joe's got to be getting up there, I have Joe, professor when I was in grad school. I won't tell you how many decades ago that was, more than two.
He was up there with you at last.
Yeah. We brought students with it.
Yeah.
That's not a bad thing, as an educator, every place I've ever gone, a person that you're talking about, I've done this for years, I always take students with me. I've done this for years and I always take students with me. All my jobs in Europe, even my job in China, I took students with me. Always. That that is a a learning that they will never, ever forget and you have a springboard for them to continue to bounce off.
Reach out to him. He may have some ideas. Also, maybe I can explore some alternatives and bring back uh. Yeah, possible consultants for you to consider future pre meeting.
I mean, working in higher education, sure, Frank, you know, some people who do this as part of their. Fear and and what they teach and there's a gentleman that teaches for Jackson College who this is what he teaches, strategic management. And he loves to come see, so he teaches in Jackson, so, you know, if there are people that we might suggest to you.
Oh, for sure, yeah, absolutely. Have anybody in mind, Frank?
No, I I don't. Um, but one thought was, uh, I know, I know there were folks from. Siena, um, Adrian College and I think there might have been a city representative on the uh. It might have been the economic development, but region two, um, I wondered if there was. You know, region two support that could help in in this kind of manner. This is. Um, I'm not trying to pander, but this is a bright group. I don't know that you need to sort of start from scratch. Uh, but if someone had a template, you could put together like. Maybe I dare I say no cost, um, that that could be helpful and. Like the region two group did the economic development study in the plan and if they sort of leave some of that in your plan, it could be, could. Oh, start to develop some synergy. I thought, but and I get you the name of the gentleman from region two, uh, not Grant Bowman. Was there, I think he still is, but the. I'll share that.
Also on that topic. Doug, Mayor, I will turn it back to you for public comment or.
Are there any other items that? Just something that I just, while we're talking about planning, uh, it's gonna be budget time soon, uh, start working on that, so. Um, do you have any thoughts yet on when you want to meet with us in February or?
Uh, Nathan just mentioned at staff meeting this morning that he's gonna send out a proposed schedule this week, so.
It's fun to make sure that's on everybody's radar that we will have that coming up too.
FYI, the audit did get filed by. Barely, so the third.
So have you already been meeting with department heads on their budgets?
We did the the capital budget piece, but we haven't, we're not to the point of uh operating budgets yet.
All right, hearing, nothing else, I will open it up for public comment. Just to reiterate, please state your name and address. Hearing no public comment, may I get a motion to adjourn? All in favor, say aye. Meeting is adjourned and we will begin our regular meeting at seventeen. Thank you.